We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for November 22nd, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Peter.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Treoka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended. So moved?
Second.
Back up.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Oh, on number DG. 8G, we're deleting that. So with that changed, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Nobody in the audience here? Anybody online? Public comments? Hearing none, move on to claims and payments. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. This morning, we don't have a lot of large payments. There is a large sum of payments to various election workers. That's $96,257.49 this week. And we also made a payment for fuel to harms of $31,664.20. Total claims are $956,791.67 this week, and they all seem to be in order. And then the sheriff's 40% fund is $3,148.56.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected official. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. The roads are in good condition this morning. Most of our crews are out cutting brush today with the help of our roadside manager is out helping as well for the day. So that will be a big help. We did just receive our two motor, our two John Deere motor graders. We just got those, I believe, Friday. Those are the ones that we ordered this fiscal year. So we are very pleased to receive those. And now we will be disposing of our two Volvo, our last two Volvo motor graders. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, I just want to thank you for how you maintain the roads in the county, you and your crew, especially the gravel roads. Last weekend, I was driving to northern Wisconsin, and my car actually broke down. The roads were so bad, it ripped the radiator hose off. So it made me appreciate what we have for our maintenance of our county roads here.
Okay, I will pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials?
Chair, yeah, well, I messed up the bill payments. I neglected to include the assessors. So the total for the week should be $1,260,168.98. I'm sorry about that.
Say that again real slow.
All right. $1,260,168.98.
Thank you.
You were only $300,000 off.
Yeah, that's not good.
Next is minutes approved for November 15th, 2022.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on either one of the items or one of the items? Hearing none, this resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution to update the agreement between Blackhawk County and 19 Iowa counties to appoint chief elected officials to oversee the northeast Iowa local workforce development to be approved and the chair to sign.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Were there any questions, I guess, on our shared agreement? It was really, for the most part, we were having to change the responsibility. The CEO group of the workforce development had originally asked for the fiscal agent to assume primary liability, and the state didn't like that change. And so they said for all the regional groups, we would all share in that responsibility. So no big surprise there, but we have no option, I guess, because we want to receive those funds.
I don't even know why we have to have a resolution on it. Tell us what to do. Have a motion and a second. This resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business. This is a resolution to approve the following rates of compensation for Blackhawk County precinct election officials. Hour late rate, $15 for chairpersons plus mileage, $13 for other precinct elected election officials plus mileage. Flat rate on election day, $250 per day for the chairpersons plus mileage, and $200 for other precinct election officials plus mileage. Mr. Peter, any comments on this?
Yes, this, these are the rates that are currently enforced. You may recall, there was an audit done of a number of counties regarding payments for precinct election officials. And the state auditor's office, they said, so show us the action where these were approved. And we said, they were approved as part of our budget. And they said, well, there should be a separate resolution. And so we are putting that in the form of a resolution, and then the state auditor will be happy with us.
Good.
State's happy with us today.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Back up.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the timekeeping system with an estimated cost of $50,000 to be paid for with American Rescue plane funds.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second.
Al, you, IT Director? Yep. This is, we've been working in conjunction with payroll on a more robust timekeeping system to replace the current one. Any questions?
Mike, did you have anything to comment on this as well?
Give me just a second here. They, I'm trying to open it up. Bear with me just a little on this. I just wanted to comment that the committee has reviewed this, Baker Tilly has reviewed this. The, the Baker Tilly has signed this, a burden approved number four, that it is, while it's not clearly enumerated in the rules and authorized use, it may be funded because we have identified the public health impact. And in this particular case, the, the public health impact is that this, this updated timekeeping system will better function. And Al can be more, I think, probably clear about this, but it can better function for remote work. All right?
Yes. You want to elaborate on that just a little bit from the public standpoint to understand how that is?
Oh, sure. This new system will have direct integration with New World, and on top of that, it will offer mobile app access. And that, that actually can be controlled as well. So there, what we can call geo fence, which not to get too technical, it'll prevent, we can prevent people accessing from certain locations. So if it, you know, if there's any concern about that, so.
Currently, everyone has to come to the courthouse.
Correct.
To do, to do that.
Yep. Our current time, time sheet system, you have to be on our network. So you'd have the VPN to access it.
Everybody has to come to the courthouse?
Or to the?
To enter your time in the current system, you have to be on one of our networks. So either at the Pinecrest building or here.
The Pinecrest, yeah. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Al. I have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the Pinecrest elevator with an estimated cost of $40,000 to be paid with ARPA funds. Where's Rory?
He's online, it looks like.
Rory, you online?
Yes. Good morning, Board. Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent. If you recall, this particular item was brought in front of the board pre-pandemic with the two options. One, repairing the elevator. Second, permanently disabling the elevator and taking it out of service. At that time, the board actually did approve to eliminate this elevator, taking it permanently out of service. Since then, with the pandemic, we had communications with many of the staff over at the Pinecrest facility. Much of them felt that given another route to be able to take throughout the building would further the distancing abilities. And so the application was sent through with that in mind. And we're looking at approximately $40,000 to bring this elevator back up online. The other thing I wanted to note, this elevator, for the yearly cost to service this elevator is approximately $1,800. So that would be the additional cost, which has already been noted on the contract. But obviously, since it's been out of service for some time now, we hadn't been paying that, but moving forward, we would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaving. Do you have a motion on this?
No.
Mike, did you have any comments on this as well? You did, I know it's hard for you to talk, but I was going to say you were adding some good information.
No, that, that's all right. That's why I'm here. So on this one, the burden of proof score was quite a bit higher. It was a level seven. Baker Tilly did not find this clearly enumerated. They, they saw it a bit more as a capital, you know, a capital improvement. Having said that, they also thought that it was justifiable, however, and that's why they gave it a score and allowed for it. The reason they thought that was because, especially in the event of high transmission, capacity could be limited on the elevators, and the additional elevator will allow for that, for that additional, you know, to kind of take the load off the other one is the idea. So, so that's where, that's where the justification for public health comes in on, on the second Pinecrest elevator. All right?
Thank you.
Craig, I got a couple of questions on that. Originally, when we discussed this, it was the repairs that was needed, but I also understood that it was a security concern, having that rail, or that elevator dumping out in a different part of the courthouse. And the second question is, we went through two years of a pretty heavy COVID, utilizing just the main elevator with no problems. I was out there for meetings going on 12 years before I even knew we had that elevator. From what I was told, it's used very little by employees and hardly ever by public. And that, I thought Rory indicated a couple weeks ago that Vicki out at, had out there, said she really didn't like to see that reopen. I could be wrong on that. But I know there was some security concerns on reopening that elevator.
If I could speak to that, yeah, pre, pre-pandemic, we did go to several different departments within that facility. And the consensus was that at that time, they didn't see any need to have that elevator back up and running, other than if we did happen to have our main elevator go down, it would serve as a backup. It, it really is just a secondary, it serves, I guess, two functions. It would serve as a backup elevator if, if something did happen to the main one. And I think now the approach that the, the building sees as a further distancing. And, and you are right, much of the public didn't realize that elevator was there. It was primarily used by employees. And the elevator actually opens up within the common space of the facility. Since then, we've also put in wing door access points. So they do need to have a badge to get into the office hallways, which this elevator does open up into the, into the common space, with the exception potentially of fifth floor. Fifth floor, it does open up. It is a, a waiting area, but it is kind of positioned behind the reception area as well.
Rory, how long has that been shut down? When did the board take?
I want to say that, I want to say we're approaching a little over two years now.
Did the main elevator ever go down in those two years?
We've had just minor issues. You know, our, our service provider has been very responsive. And, you know, if, if we're down, it's, it's for very short periods of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead. I was gonna say, I was just wondering if this is a project, I mean, not to maybe take it off our list yet, something we might want to reconsider in the future, or at least put in a holding pattern right now, kind of put it on hold with some of our other projects for further review or consideration?
I agree.
Yep, I agree too.
All right, so.
Tom or Chris, any thoughts on that?
I, I think that's a good idea, plus the fact that you're looking at an annual cost of roughly $1,800 that goes up every year. I frankly, as anybody other than, I haven't only used it once, and that's what I found out. We had it. Has the other board members used it on a regular basis when they went out there?
Yes, I should probably use the stairs, but I use it all the time when I am out there. Yeah.
You don't, you don't use the main one? You use that back one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, I use the main one. I'm sorry. I meant the elevator, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, I was talking about that little back one back there. Frankly, I didn't know it existed.
Craig had a comment too. Did you want to?
You, poor listener.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say though, too, there's something you brought up, a good point. I said, we talked about the state offices and the 50, their plus 50%. Some days, we're not sure exactly how long they're going to continue rentals out there, even though we're hoping it continues on. So that population could change for our building too. So some of those things would make a difference.
And like Tom said, we went two years without it. And I found it a long time ago, but it.
Gosh, you're a saint.
It's been out of service that long. Let's just leave it like we said, like we all agreed. Let's visit that at a later date.
Thank you.
I would like to just mention that if, if the board does choose to keep it out of service, to permanently disable it per the requirements from the state, it is right around $5,000 to do that.
I thought we did that already, Rory. And if we have it, why not?
Yeah.
Because of this, this reason here, we didn't want to throw $5,000 at it with the potential of it coming back in front of the board and putting it back into service.
But two years ago, we closed it, we thought we'd be reopening it?
Actually, right after, when the pandemic started, we, that's when we started communicating with the staff out there. And I had a lot of feedback from the staff wishing that the elevator would be back up and running. And so we put that on hold because it would have been quite a lot more to, to bring it back into service if they would have followed through with disabling it. Because there's, that would be basically eliminating the, the electrical feed to the, to the service, plus the equipment room down in the basement. That machinery would be essentially mothballed. And it would have been quite a lot more to bring it back into service. So that's why we held off, not knowing if this pandemic would change the board's mind on it.
So is that law that we gotta do that stuff? Or is it, can we just shut it down and like we've been until it for the last two years and leave it the way it is?
If, if the board chooses to essentially take it completely out of service, we would have to go and do those per the state requirements. It's very similar to, years ago, we had a third elevator here at the courthouse. I believe it was primarily used by the judges. And that one, there are certain protocols that you have to follow when you permanently take a elevator out of service.
What, what is that, an Iowa law you're citing, or what?
Yeah, it's workforce development, I believe.
Workforce development, okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on to the resolution to approve the evidence intake facility project with an estimated cost of $1,800,000 to be paid with ARPA funds. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Mark Herbst, Sheriff's Office. So we've been working on this project for nearly a year now. Baker Tilly, our consultant, has issued their report to the committee. We think that they did very eloquently address out the need, that why we should do this, and we stand behind that.
What was the ranking, Mark?
Mike, I believe it was a 10.
Yeah, I'm prepared to discuss the ranking in greater detail when the board's ready.
I'm assuming, Mike, because of that high capital cost, being that high of a amount?
There's, there's really two ground, two issues here. And I, I, the committees discussed this as well. And this is a, quite candidly, this is a tough one.
Yes, it is.
It, it's greater than a million, but it's non-enumerated capital. And the, the justification is borderline on this. So I, I had a couple of separate conversations after receiving this with Baker Tilly about it. I will say the justification, as, as Captain Herbst pointed out, is very well written. And it, I think it highlights all of the, the reasoning for this. However, the way that it was described to me was a really close call. And by a really close call, I mean between putting this on the burden of proof continuum at all and not. And by not, I mean it wouldn't, they, they just didn't think it would qualify. He said it was very close, but because of the fact that we were seeing an uptick in, in crime statistics in the last couple of years, I think particularly when the pandemic was at its worst, there was a justification to have an area that was safer for the workers to be doing it. When the committee discussed it, and I'd invite Michelle to correct me if I get any of this wrong, but when the committee discussed it, the, the kind of burning question in our heads, or the, the burning issue in our heads was, how often are we really dealing with a crowd in this facility where social distancing is of significant concern? And that, that too is right there with Baker Tilly's concerns as well. So this is one of those, you know, we talked a while back about, you know, well, gee, you know, we, we justify all of these, it seems, and we, we say, well, some of them, you got more to prove. And this one certainly is the highest in terms of what we'd have to prove. But it's also the riskiest in terms of if we were to ever, now, I don't want, I don't want anybody on the board to think there's going to be a problem with this with our, in, with our independent audits each year. Baker Tilly has advised that this report will, will get us past that. And they aren't making it up. They, they made an objective judgment call here on this one. But it, but that will get us past any audit that we have, like from, that we have annually. The problem is, if we get a, a treasury audit, and however likely that is, or unlikely that is, and that's tough to call, especially being the size of county that we are, but it's, but this one's going to, you know, we're going to have to stand this one up with a little more strength than we are other ones, I think. And the way that it was described to me by Baker Tilly over the phone, and I spoke with Colby, and also the way that, the, kind of the thought of the committee, was that if we're going to move forward with this, we would be on much more solid footing to move this one to, to replacement revenue or lost revenue. We've had different, we've had different names for it, but I think we all know what I'm talking about. And I, I don't like saying that about something this expensive, but the fact of the matter is, objectively speaking, and I'm just calling balls and strikes here, this one's borderline. And so I hope that that casts a somewhat clearer picture of what we're, what we're looking at on this one.
Yeah. It, it does for me, Mike, only in the sense that, yeah, I don't see it as a congregate setting. So the public health benefit to me was always kind of questionable a little bit. It sounds to me that it's up to the board, obviously, but the lost revenue category is probably where it would best fit for the county. As far as, you know, no, more or less no questions answered asked, because it would be a government decision to do that. And that $10 million is there for us to do that type of thing. My concern would be that we haven't really looked at yet what that lost revenue category is that's got some projects in it already that we thought were ARPA qualified earlier and, you know, for other programs, and then didn't fit. So they had to be in that lost revenue category. So for me, I'd, I'd like to, this is another project, hold off on any kind of action on this too, until we've had a chance to look at lost revenue category and see if that's where we want to spend those dollars, because we have that limited amount of money.
So Mike, my understanding from Baker Tilly in this conversation, I think it was with Colby, was that he thought that the section that he was writing the center would be most appropriate. But may perhaps that's changed since I last spoke with him.
I, I would encourage you to, to talk to him again, but I, my, he definitely gave me the impression, and I think he outright said, but maybe you and I should have a conference call with him on this, because I do owe the board, among other things, an analysis of, of the, where we're at with lost revenue regardless. And then when we go back on that issue, because that's kind of the feeling I'm starting to get here, is that we're going to be back before the board on this again in the future. He seemed to think that, you know, some type of services provided was a better, was a better category for this. And that requires use of lost revenue funding.
Okay.
So we're, we're getting different, different impressions, but it could be how we, we both talked to him. And I sometimes think the best way to resolve that is to have us both get on the phone together with him, so that we make sure, you know, however, we might be asking the question differently, we're getting the, the answer that we need.
Sure, I'm certainly open to that. As far as Linda addressing the congregate setting issue, you are correct in that, in this type of facility, doing the type of work, it's not open to the public. But an investigator does and can't do this job by themselves.
Oh, no.
So they are in close proximity. The current mechanism or facility that we have doesn't have ventilation. They're working with communicable diseases. They're working with pathogens that are a risk to their, their self and their health. A couple of, about, as we entertain this, I think, I think it's probably most appropriate if I just, I'll read right off the report of what Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly had found as a objective consultant that we hired. It says, "Blackhawk County must increase their capacity for processing and storage, storing large evidence in a safe and efficient environment that reduces the risk and spread of communicable disease like COVID-19. The current facility offers inadequate space to practice social distancing, which creates a hazardous environment for the safety of law enforcement personnel. This creates further harm to the administrative capacity of the facility resulting in inefficiencies in a time when the demands for the facility are increasing. The public health emergency has demonstrated the need for local government to have both the capacity and safe workspaces to serve the public effectively and adequately." to have both the capacity and safe workspaces to serve the public effectively and adequately. The current facility has no climate control or ability to install ventilation improvements. There is no running water. This prevents the remediation of unsafe work conditions and mitigation of COVID-19 spread without a total reconstruction. Throughout the pandemic, public safety personnel have continued working in these unsafe conditions to accomplish their critical crime prevention mission. They have adopted other safety measures like PPE usage and staggered working hours. These other solutions are not viable long-term, considering that washing hands, ventilating confined spaces, and socially distancing are some of the best methods for reducing disease spread, but currently impossible to implement in the facility.
Mark, I, you don't have to read further. I, I truly agree with you that it's probably a facility that needs replacing. I think when they, initially, when we talked about this, maybe even last year's budget, I'm trying to remember when it did come up. I think it was proposed even, not before we even had the ARP funds. And it was something that the Sheriff's Department wanted us to be looking at.
And the ARP funds make it. But again, we want to meet that criteria. We think, although it's a 10.
Well, and I'm not worried about the 10 and meeting that burden of proof. It's, it's just whether or not we meet the, like I said, when they talk about prevention in congregate settings, that was like the nursing home prisons, the jails, those types of things. This is kind of a very different. But yes, safety of employees is certainly something I think too. I just thought maybe we needed to, if it's going to come out of lost revenue, let's see that that's what kind of the Boards gets supportive of that and, and then we go forward. That's, it's not to criticize at all that something's not.
The necessity, yeah.
Yeah. And the air conditioning and ventilation, and that's certainly to me important, but it.
So we appreciate your time, your consideration, and all those have put, have put a lot of time, energy, and effort in.
Definitely. A lot of time's been put into that. Yeah. Baker Tilly's as well as all of yours.
And they've been very, they've been very good to work with.
Different ones too. So, yeah. No, thank you.
I support the project, but can you and Mike get together with Colby?
We absolutely can. Yes.
Yeah. Give, give me about a week or so on this, just so I can get over this little hump I'm on right now. Okay?
That sounds good, Mike.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just add really quick, Craig, that I believe that when this was brought to us first, it was at a million dollars. And now it's 1.8 million. So that's quite a big increase. So it, I mean, it sounds like this facility has needed to be updated for a long time. I'm just not convinced that the ARP dollars are going to be the, the best way to, to get that done, especially if we have to take nearly a $2 million chunk out of the lost revenue before we have really developed a kind of strategic plan of how we could invest those dollars, since they're the most flexible part. I think we need to have kind of the whole picture in place before we would tie up such a big chunk of, of that money.
Thank you, Chris.
And I see Tom's gone for now. So we'll move on to res, number or letter E, a resolution that the personnel requisition for an assistant county attorney full-time replacement in the county attorney's office with a start date of no sooner than December 16th be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none this resolution, please answer your name it's called.
Little?
Not here.
I'm sorry. Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next, a motion to hire temporary staff for the Board Office front desk to provide Board and Finance Director support, using either a temp employee or a staffing agency not to exceed $30,000, as recommended by Michelle Whedon, her Finance Director.
So moved.
Second. Do you want to say anything about this? What is?
I'll come to much money.
As I mentioned in my email, we might want to do this for several months till we figure out what exactly might be the best fit for the office. We all know we desperately need that position. We've got to have somebody to do the agendas. And there's a lot of other activity that happens and be at the front desk. I'm hopeful that possibly we could find someone that could maybe do some more accounting type work. That would help. So we just want some time to figure out what exactly responsibilities could be assigned to that position.
So you might have to give it a new title.
That's possible. We haven't even gone there yet in the discussions, but.
The time you were kind of looking for was because it's budget and you've got so many things going on is why you were trying.
Yes. Cause I, I won't have time really to do it during the budget. And it will also give me an opportunity to see what that position has to do and if there are other things that could be absorbed.
The city of Waterloo stole our employee.
Yes, they did.
She went to the fire department. Or she's going.
And we sold one of theirs.
Yes.
That's also true.
So it's a tit for tat.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
So moved.
It's moved.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any reports or information from the Board?
Yes. I just want to congratulate Joe Leibold for being named Chief of Police in Waterloo.
Very good move. I'd just like to comment about today. 59 years ago today, I just put on my Facebook site a little while ago that I was sitting in class, not, not at this time, but later in the day. And it was announced over the intercom at Columbus High that we were all to go to the gymnasium right away. And everybody, all the kid, all the students headed for the gym. And when we got in the gym, it was announced that John Fitzgerald Kennedy had been shot. And he was, at the time was still alive, but within a few minutes after we, the priest was talking, we were informed that John Fitzgerald had passed. So it was a sad day in my life, because I had a lot of respect for the man. A lot of stuff come out later, but that was beside the point. He's a good man. Anything else?
I'll add to that, I'll add to that, Craig, that even though I was born, you know, years and years af, after his death, it was still the, the legacy of Kennedy brothers rang true, especially in my, my liberal Irish Catholic family. My grandmother, who's 95, still has the Kennedy campaign poster in the kitchen. And is a wonderful legacy of service. And, you know, even you think about what, what could have been, had they not been stolen away.
Good point. Anything?
Mr. Jay, I just wanted to, as, since Chris and Mike are still on, the ARP meeting that follows this meeting, Al is going to set it up so that we can do a Teams meeting in the IT conference room. So you can attend that remotely. So we can be in touch after the meeting on how to do that. But I just wanted to catch you before you left. Thanks.
All right. Hey, Grant, why don't, can you just make sure we send a committee-wide email with a link and everything on that?
Sure.
All right. Thanks. Sorry.
How entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.